And I will tell you that from the last meeting, we're having increases in participation with our public. We, I have found out that more people pay attention on Facebook than YouTube, but we track them both. But I will tell you, combined, the live stream view ship was 8,222 from last BOC meeting. And I'm looking forward to that increase in each time, more, more citizens participating on what's going on in their county, our government, to make things better. Welcome and also to elected officials. If you're an elected official, I'd like for you to raise your hand or stand up and introduce yourself and where your department is. Start with Ashley.
Hey, Ashley Henson, I'm the sheriff of Paulding.
Anybody else? I thought I saw some more. I didn't. Where did, where'd the judge go? He got mad and left, didn't he? Okay. All right, well, good to have you all. It was great. I will remind you, if you have a cellphone, if you hadn't turned it off already, please put it on silent or turn it off so we won't be interrupted. I'll have the marshal bring in our sign-in sheet for me. Thank you, sir. And if I will, I'm gonna get everybody to stand up. We're gonna have a prayer and a pledge from my pastor, Mr., Dr. Keith Stale. I'm gonna tell you what, he, I've been all over the, all over this place with him on mission trip with kids. He's got a servant's heart. He's got a beautiful wife, Jill, two daughters and a son that I have fallen in love with his entire family. I love his Bible studies. I feel like I'm back in seminary when I, when I get his leadership. So Pastor Keith, start us off in a prayer and however the Lord leads you.
I do believe in the authority of the Word of God, so I would like to begin with the reading out of the Psalms. The law of the Lord is perfect, converting the soul. The testimony of the Lord is sure, making wise the simple. The statutes of the Lord are right, rejoicing the heart. The commandment of the Lord is pure, enlightening the eyes. The fear of the Lord is clean, enduring forever. The judgments of the Lord are true and righteous altogether. More to be desired are they than gold, yea, than much fine gold, sweeter also than honey and the honeycomb. Moreover, by them your servant is warned, and in keeping them there is great reward. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, Lord God, I do thank you for this day, another day, Father, to know your great grace. Father, you have lavish grace on your children, that which we have never deserved nor could earn. And it is in that grace, Father, we come before you in prayer, asking for wisdom. Your word says that if anyone lacks wisdom, let him ask and he shall be given. So we pray for wisdom during a meeting such as this, that impacts, influences so many lives. We are grateful, Father, for the gift of prayer, where you have said that you incline, you direct, you purpose your ear to the prayers of your children, so we know we do not pray in vain. God, thank you. And I do pray for this meeting today, that there will be excellence in thought, discussion, decision, and that every bit of that, Father, would be to your honor and for your glory alone, for you are worthy. In the name of Jesus Christ, I pray, and all the redeemed of God's sake.
Amen.
Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you Pastor Keith. Now I forgot to tell you, he's a new granddaddy also, of two, two grandsons. How old is Cooper?
Cooper is two months old today.
Today? Oh, that's awesome. Congratulations.
Walker is three.
Walker's three. He's a mess, I'm telling you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Sandy. Appreciate it.
As a reminder, the minutes are for your review and for the July 22nd work session, also July, the 22nd board meeting, and also at nine o'clock the AM, the public hearing meetings, and at 6:30, the public hearing meetings for your review. Next, we'll have the announcements for Team Paulding, Employment of the Month, John Meeks with the property management development. There you are. Hey, buddy.
Hey, thank you.
We're here today to honor John Meeks at Fire Station One. John always goes above and beyond, you know, coming in every morning. He's always excited, energetic, upbeat. He is always willing to work with others and always willing to learn, you know. He'll step up and get out of his comfort zone a little bit, something he don't really know. He's willing to learn, work with everybody else, and he's a true team player for the county. He's a very energetic, family environment there, so really big building each other up. John loves to build everybody up. He's a great person to be around all the time. Thank you, John, for the hard work. You came to us with a lot of experience and it doesn't go unnoticed, you know. You bring a lot to the table, you brought a lot, you're gonna continue to bring a lot. So thank you for all that you do, from me, from everybody here at the county, all the citizens I know. If they could know you, they would say, great job, and thank you for all the service that
I love your spirit there, buddy. Thanks for everything that you do. Next, we'll have Sheriff Henson to recognize Deputy Bryce Matic with the Purple Heart and Medal, Purple Heart and Medal of Merit, Deputy Alex Davis, Christopher Crisco, and Joshua Langston, I think I pronounced that, with the Medal of Merit, Sheriff Henson. And good to see your staff here.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Well, good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and so we're glad to be here and nothing's wrong. We're here to support our guys, but I want to take a point of personal privilege. I was here at the public hearing for the budget, and I want to thank you guys, our Commissioners, because I know what it takes for you guys to sit up here and make difficult decisions, and I pray blessings on you, because you've got big decisions to make at two o'clock this afternoon. And if you look around this room, you see these men and women in uniform, whether that's brown or black or white. These men and women of public safety, it's a big deal, and they love you guys and they appreciate what you do, and they know what you do. And we, as a sheriff, I certainly appreciate all the hard work that you guys have put in, working with Ms. Pollard this year. As a newly-elected sheriff and as she's a newly-appointed county manager, we've had a lot of hurdles to get over, and we've done so quite gracefully, I think. And so, thank you to every single one of you, and please just bear our men and women in mind when you make your decision at two o'clock today. Nobody wants higher taxes, but at the end of the day, if you want somebody coming to your house when your house is on fire, or when your house is broken into, these men and women are gonna be the ones that come and do it, and it comes at a cost. And the cost of safety, to me, is paramount. And so, I just want to take that personal point of privilege, just to thank you guys for what you do, and we appreciate that. So, I think if we can get Phillip to hit the screens, we'll, we got a little slideshow. But as you mentioned earlier, we're here to honor and recognize several of our deputies. So the first deputy we want to recognize, and so let me kind of go back in time just a little bit back, and many of you guys were there, our Commissioners, we had a Fourth of July luncheon, and we were able to recognize several of these deputies, but Deputy Langston was unable to be there. So I wanted to make sure that we got an opportunity to recognize all of these deputies for the heroic actions that they took on March the 17th. And so, first I want to call Bryce Matic up. So Bryce, if you'll come on up. If y'all don't know this young man, this guy is, you can go on right up there in the front. You get to be front and center. I know he doesn't want to be front and center, but this guy right here, y'all, if you don't believe in God, look at this guy, because he is a shining example of what God can do. I mean, he is here, by the grace of God, and I'm so thankful.
I think he deserves a standing ovation right now.
I think so too. I agree. So, we're gonna bring these other guys up in just a second, but I want to talk about Bryce for just a minute. So on March the 17th, we got a call for service regarding a, an individual who was in a mental health crisis. And so, these deputies went to the scene and made contact with the mother of the individual having the crisis. It was early in the morning, I think it was about seven o'clock, and, you know, they were going, they, to the, to the call, spoke with the individual on the scene, and went into the room with the individual who they knew had possibly had a weapon. The mother had told them, he's having a mental health crisis and he's got a gun. Now, what you didn't see is these four men walk out and say, nah, we're good, we'll come back, check it later, when things cool down. You know what these guys did? They went into the room. That's exactly what they did. They didn't walk away, they went into the room where they knew there was a gun, where they knew someone was having a mental health crisis. Now, if that doesn't take courage and valor, I don't know what does, okay? And when I explain to the rest of the story to you, you'll really understand. So they went in the room, and it wasn't, it was literally seconds, and Bryce was the point man, he was the lead in the room, and the first thing he saw in his face was the barrel of a handgun, literally pointing at his face. He had enough time, and, you know, this is just a testament to our training and the men and women in our training division that trained these deputies, but he had enough presence of mind to do two things at one time. He not only drew his weapon with his right hand, but with his left hand, he grabbed the barrel of the weapon, and he directed it away from his face, so he didn't get shot directly in the face. And unfortunately, he was shot. He was shot in the left shoulder, and he went down. His other partners that were in the room, Deputy Resco, Deputy Davis, and Deputy Langston, were also in the room with him. Deputy Resco and Deputy Langston, I'm sorry, Deputy Resco and Deputy Davis returned fire, stopping the threat. Deputy Langston got Deputy Matic and drug him out of the room, got him into the garage area where he began immediately rendering aid, trying to take his vest off and trying to figure out what was going on, where was he hit, was it bad, how bad was it? And so, they went and got a med kit from the car, which we have in all of our patrol cars, which is something that, that we buy, because, hey, it's important, we gotta have stuff, and utilized that med kit to stop the bleeding on the wound. And immediately, obviously, radio traffic goes crazy, and we get an ambulance there, and he's quickly taken off to the hospital. But y'all, this is just a testament to the training that these, these men and women go through, but just the good in, in our Lord and in the county, and because it could have been so much differently, or could have ended so much differently. But I am so thankful that Bryce is here, and got a couple pictures to show you. So it's funny, this was the first picture that I got of Bryce, and this is not long, and you can see the little galls over his shoulder where, where he got shot. I don't know if y'all have seen Forrest Gump, but where he talks about his million-dollar wound, but it's, it's, I told him, I said, you've got a story now for all the ladies, because, hey, you're, you're a stud. So it happened at 7:05, and so what's hilarious is this shirt. So it says, I'm only here because I like donuts. So when you go into the hospital, everybody knows, like, if something traumatic happens, the first thing they do is cut your clothes off. So of course, his, his uniform was cut off, and he didn't have any clothes to wear. And so, the hospital had that shirt, I don't know if they were playing a joke on him or what, but that was not his shirt. That was given to him by the hospital. And so, like it says here, less than 12 hours later, Bryce was recovered enough to go home, where he was on, you know, medical leave for a few weeks, but he was a, such a shining star in this whole thing. He wanted to get back to work. He was like, when can I come back? I can come back to light duty. I can just sit in the office and, you know, take phone calls. He was so eager to get back. And it just epitomizes the servant's heart that he has, and how much he cares about this county. It would be so easy for him to say, you know what, y'all, I, I don't want to come back. This is not what I thought it was gonna be. I don't want to do this job. But that is exactly the opposite of what Bryce said and what he did, and so I'm so proud of him for that, because he is a great young man, and he's a shining star for our sheriff's office, and I couldn't be more proud. And so, at the, the previous ceremony back in July, Bryce was awarded the Purple Heart Award and the Medal of Merit. And so, there are only two people that I'm aware of that have ever been awarded the Purple Heart, and that's Deputy Matic and Major Clint Morris. Major Morris was injured in a vehicle pursuit back years ago, but those are the only two individuals that I'm aware of that have ever been awarded the Purple Heart. And so, I'm just so proud of Bryce and thankful that he's here with us today and back. I mean, all his, his extremities work, he's got full range of motion, but he truly is blessed. And I told him, I said, God's got plans for you, man. I don't know what they are, but he's got big plans. So let's give Deputy Bryce Matic a round of applause. So there's the two awards, and there's Bryce in his Class A uniform. So let's call Deputy Davis, Deputy Resco, and Deputy Langston up, if, if I could. And so Deputy Resco and Deputy Davis were actually able to receive their awards back at our event in July, but Deputy Langston was not able to be there. And so, Alex, if you'll raise your hand. So Alex and Chris, if you'll raise your hand, and then Joshua Langston right here. So these are the four guys that were involved in that incident, and it just shows an extraordinary amount of courage and valor to do what these guys did. And I want to reiterate that when they got this call, they knew good and well what they were going into, just like our fire friends. They know that they're, they're not going to a house that might be on fire. They're probably going to a house that's on fire, and they know they're probably going in that house. These guys literally went into a home with a person having a mental health crisis who they knew had a gun. I mean, let that sink in, y'all. If you look at pictures of 9/11, you see pictures of everybody running away when the towers were coming down, and the police officers and the firefighters were going towards it. This job is not an easy job. This is not an easy job, and it's only, it's, it's a job that, it's, I mean, it's a calling. It truly is a calling. And so, I think it's important for everybody to really understand and let that sink in and what this job truly entails, because there's evil out there every single day, not only in Paulding County, but all across our country. And these guys right here, and these men and women back here behind you, they're what's standing in line in between chaos and order, and we gotta have them every single day. So thank you to you guys. So we're gonna present these awards, and so these young men got the Medal of Merit. So the Medal of Merit, they all got it, is the second highest award that you can get at the sheriff's office. And so, we have a formal review process, similar to that of the military, and so recommendations made, it goes to our commendation committee, and they review. They essentially conduct an internal investigation into the incident. They look at body cam footage, they look at reports, they talk to deputies involved, they talk to witnesses, they do a full-blown investigation to ensure that when we give an award, it is warranted. And without a doubt, this is 1,000% warranted. And so, today, we're going to present Deputy Langston with his Medal of Merit, because he was unable to be here. So I'm super excited and proud to present Deputy Joshua Langston with the Medal of Merit. So if y'all will give all these guys a round of applause.
Congratulations, you guys.
And again, thank you guys for allowing us this opportunity. We felt like this was, I know this is a busy meeting, but this deserves public appreciation, and the community needs to know what these guys do every day. And thank you again for what y'all do.
Yes, it does, and we thank you for all your department and everything that y'all do to keep us safe, buddy.
And who on the board has been on their ride-along yet, besides me?
Well, if we had time, you'd tell us.
Commissioner Dunn has done one in the past. He's, he's been one and one.
He's been on one.
And I will say, we'd love to have you guys conduct a ride-along. Commissioner Caker did. She called me the next morning and was nearly in tears because of what she saw, because of the things that are occurring in our county, literally underneath everybody's noses. There's a lot that goes on every day. We're 53 people short at the sheriff's office, 53 people.
And the, the team that I rode with has been all over Facebook this past week for a drug bust, and I was like, oh no, those are my guys.
Yes. Well, thank you, guys, and we look forward to having all of you guys in our patrol cars soon.
We're looking forward to it also.
Yes, sir.
All right, invited guests, we have none at this time. Bid awards, we do have six, and the first one I'm gonna go over is Discuss Action to Award. The 2025 Asphalt Project Contract Five to the Lowest Reliable bidder, that'd be Northwest Georgia Paving, Inc., in the amount of $4,046,485. Project includes 11.4 miles of milling, patching, leveling, and plant mix surfacing on three county roads and 22 streets in a subdivision. Funding for this project will be from the Georgia Department of Transportation, LRA With the remaining balance allocated from the general fund, SPOS, roads are located in Commission One and also Post Four. Mr. Jones.
Morning. On March 20th, 2025, the Georgia Department of Transportation provided the county with a grant opportunity under their local roads administration, LRA program. The LRA grant amount allocated to Paulding was $2,723,270.21. And like the previously allocated 2024 LRA grant opportunity, there is no required county match funds. DOT staff completed and returned the application, which was approved by GDOT on April 23rd, 2025. The Paulding County Finance Department advertised the Department of Transportation contract, also known as the 2025 Asphalt Project Contract Five, to include 11.04 miles of milling, patching, leveling, and plant mix resurfacing on three county thorough roads and 22 streets in one subdivision. Nine bids were received and opened on July 11th, 2025. DOT has reviewed the nine bids and recommends award to the lowest reliable bidder, Northwest Georgia Paving, in the amount of $4,046,485. The low bid was 10% lower than the county estimate. In addition, the bid showed good competition with four other bids being within 10% of the low bid contractor. So again, we're, we're getting a lot of people bidding on these things, and the prices show a good range, which basically lets us know that this is a fair price for the work. Funding for this project, again, will be allocated through the LRA grant and general funds and SPOS, like I said, road scheduling, the contractor in Post One and Four. The project, if approved, has a March 1st, 2026 completion date. And answer any questions, if you have any.
There are none, thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Next, I'm gonna ask Ms. Golden if she's okay. She's got the, the next four. I'm gonna read them all at one time and let you discuss them. The next would be Discuss Action to Approve the Purchase of Two 2026 F-750 Dump Trucks from Hardy Family Ford, utilizing estate contract pricing in the amount of $108,344 each. Funding will be through the general fund and the water funds. The next one that she'll be speaking will be Discuss Action to Approve the Purchase of an F-150 PV from Hardy's Family Ford, utilizing estate contract pricing in the amount of $50,760, $50,760,000.0 for the sheriff's office. SPOS funds will be used for this purchase. The next one will be Discuss Action to Approve the Purchase of an F-350 Transit Van from the Hardy Family Ford, utilizing the state contract, pricing in the amount of $56,450. For the sheriff's office, SPOS funds will be used for this purchase. And the last one is Discuss Action to Approve the Purchase Through the State Contract Pricing of Three F-250s in the amount of $174,336.60. And Two F-350s in the amount of $154,911 from the Hardy Family Ford. For DOT, sheriff's office, and the water and sewage. SPOS funding, general funds, and the water funds will be used for these purchases. Ms. Gold.
Thank you. In an effort to save time, I'm not gonna reread everything that you've just read. I just want to say that this is the standard annual vehicle purchase for these departments. These were vehicles that need to be replaced, they've, the vehicles that they are replacing are at end of life. We will be utilizing state contract pricing to make these purchases. We evaluate that to make sure that that's the most, best use of the tax dollars, and that is, is where we'll be making the purchase. Hardy Family Ford is the state contract holder. Right now, the window for purchasing is open, so we need to make these purchases now. These vehicles are either already on the lot that we can take possession of, or will need to be ordered, so we're asking for your approval.
Thank you so much. There's no reports for committees or departments at this time, public participation on agenda items. The consent, consent agenda, there are several. Ms. Palmer, there's three. You want to do them all individually, or?
We can just read through them.
Just read through them? Okay.
All of them.
That's right. Adopt Fire Department Job Classification for Assistant Chief of Prevention and Fire Marshal. Adopt the Fire Department Job Classification for Assistant Chief of Operations. Adopt Fire Department Job Classification for Assistant Chief of Administration. And Discuss Action to Approve the, no, this is you. Can we go ahead and read through that, too? Discuss Actions to Approve the Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of Dallas for the Paulding County to Conduct Municipal Elections. Next is Discuss Action to Approve the Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of Hiram for the, for Paulding County to Conduct Municipal Elections. Next is Declare the Following Items Listed as Surplus and Approved for Disposal Through the Sale, the Auction, or Trade or Donation. And there are five of those that you can read. Any, any, let me see. You need to move, does it, would any of y'all like to move this to new business, or y'all okay with everything? Everything good? Okay. Old business at this time, we have none. New business. First is to Discuss Action to Adopt Resolution 2025-23, Adopting the County MNO Mailage Rate at 4.30 mils. You want to do them all at one time or individually?
Yes, sir. If you want to, just read them all at one time.
Okay. Discuss Action to Adopt Resolution 2025-23, Adopting the Board Millage Rate to 0.08 mils. Discuss Action to Adopt Resolution 2025-24, Adopting the Fire Tax Millage Rate at 2.10 mils. Discuss Action to Adopt Resolution 2025-25, Adopting the County School Tax Millage Rate at 17.675 mils. Discuss Action to Adopt Resolution 2025-26, Authorizing the Tax Commissioners to Retain a 2.9% Fee for the Collection of School Tax. And the next is Discuss Action to Adopt the Fiscal Year 2026 Budget. And then the next one is Discuss Action to Authorize the Chairman to Enter into a Right.
Mr. Chair, I think that items 13 through 18 are gonna be addressed by the county manager, and 19 is for Mr. Jones.
I got you. Okay. All right. Ms. Paul. I got you. Okay. All right. Ms. Palmer?
Okay, I'll just start with number, um, eleven. So, resolution twenty-five twenty-two.
And Ms. Palmer, I think that's going to be item thirteen on the agenda.
Yeah. Thirteen through eighteen.
Correct. Sorry. Um, resolution twenty-five twenty-two will allow us to set the mileage rate at four point three. We have conducted three public hearings, and we have gone through, um, a process, uh, for our budget, and we have arrived that the four point three is needed to fund the services at the level that we currently are, um, operating the, the county government operations. So unless you have any questions?
No, okay.
Um, I will mention, uh, twenty-five twenty-three is a reduction. So it's a reduction for the exact same amount as twenty-five twenty-two is an increase. So the net change should be zero. So in the MNO, we have an increase from four-one to four-three, and in the bond, we have a decrease from one to point eight.
I have a quick question there. On our, uh, maybe on my draft agenda, let me make sure it's different on this one. I guess I was going by the wrong one, maybe. But I just want to make sure that we have those numbers right. Yeah, they're right on the, on this agenda. Okay, sorry.
That's okay. And the fire is, um, specifically to fund the operations of the fire department. Paulding County has a special dis- special service district for fire services, and so the two point one mils will fund operations, um, for the fire department. Resolution twenty twenty-five twenty-five sets the mileage rate for the school system. So the process for that is the school system conducted three public hearings as well. They adopted a mileage rate to be sent to you. You are the tax levying authority, and so you, we really, they're, they have requested that the seventeen point six seven five mils be adopted for their services. Um, resolution twenty twenty-five twenty-six allows the tax commissioner to collect those property taxes and retain a two point oh nine, um, collection fee for those services. And those funds are also sent to the county, and they're used in the general fund operations. Item number eighteen is the twenty twenty-six budget. So on June first, we published a budget, excuse me. And since that time, we have, um, gone through a process of reducing that budget where we could. We had increases in personnel, um, primarily for retention purposes, and benefit cost had increased over time. So we tried to reduce the operations costs as much as we possibly could. Um, that budget was amended on June, July eleventh, and the one you have before you has a, um, some amend, some changes as well since that time. We've gone through the capital and reduced as much as we could possibly reduce. We've reduced operations. We've frozen some vacant positions, so we, we're not going to fill those positions if we can provide the services without it. Um, we do have a few, um, additional positions, but overall, we've tried to reduce everywhere that we could reduce to keep that as low as possible. Any questions?
I do know that we have anticipated a timeframe when that will kick back in, and uh, it will, it will come back in to play, uh, to get more people hired. Uh, so just bear with us. Thank you. I think there's any more questions? Mr. Jones, you have the next four. The first is discuss action to authorize the chairman to enter, uh, into a right-of-way mowing and maintenance agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for PI number double zero one-three-nine-five-zero. That's at SR ninety-one at Dabs Bridge Road's intersection improving project, uh, roundabout and realignment of Dobbs, uh, Dabs Bridge Road. This project is located in post four. And the next one, I'm going to do them all at one time. Is that okay? Uh, discuss in action for the board of commissioners to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven, uh, uh, acquisition of, uh, uh, real property for the corridor improvement along SR one oh one from Crossroad Church Road to the Golden South Parkway. That's S, uh, PR SR one oh one, nine four seven dash one, PI number double zero one-nine-six-six-nine. This project is located in post two. Next is to discuss action for the board of commissioners to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight, uh, acquisition of real property from the SR twenty-two corridor, which is the Hiram Sudie Road, Davis Mill Road North, uh, and the Davis Mill Road South intersection improving project. PR IMP two ninety and the SR one-twenty connector dash one. Project is located in post one and in post three. Uh, the next is to discuss action to authorize the chairman to execute options to purchase right-of-way for the sale of realty in partial seventy-seven dash, uh, ninety-four dash partial ID zero one one dash three dash four dash zero two seven dash quad zero in the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars. Uh, the partial, uh, ninety-six, partial ID zero one one, uh, point three, point four, point zero two six dash quad zero in the amount of a hundred and forty-four, a hundred and forty thousand at the, uh, of the Crest, Cedar Crest Road, uh, winding project, PI zero zero one-three-seven-oh. Funding will be from the SPOS with, uh, reimbursement up to five million dollars from the federal government. The project is located in post one and also post four.
That's a mouthful.
That is a mouthful.
Think about me, I've got to go off through all these ones. All right. Uh, first one, the mowing and maintenance agreement with the GDOT, sixty-one at Dabs Bridge Road. Uh, Georgia's Department of Transportation is developing plans for an intersection and roadway improvement project on State Route sixty-one, Cartersville Highway and Dabs Bridge Road located in post four. Currently, the roadway is a two-lane undivided road on sixty-one rural shoulders. The intersection of, uh, Dabs Bridge Road comes in at an acute angle, um, impact site distance. There's been some severe crash history over the years. Um, the GDOT project, um, relocates Dabs Bridge Road approximately twenty-five-hundred feet to the north, um, providing a new intersection that's a roundabout. Um, GDOT is funding and managing the entire roundabout project, including the costs. GDOT has submitted a request to Paulding County to enter into a right-of-way mowing and maintenance agreement, whereas Paulding County would commit to the maintenance of the proposed landscaping and sidewalk within the limits of the roundabout project for a term of fifty years from the date of, um, signature unless termination of the agreement. The obligations for the, um, roundabout project would be the mowing and maintenance, including the s- mowing, trimming, sodded areas, uh, pruning of trees, herbicide application, pesticide, litter, and debris removal within the project, and maintaining and repairing sidewalks within the project limits. The agreement provides, um, requirements and language that the mowing and maintenance activities for the roundabout will be completed by Paulding County or their contractors. Paulding County will be solely responsible for the costs of the sidewalk maintenance, repairs, litter, and debris removal, and mowing and maintenance, and landscaping. Um, if approved, funding, um, for the maintenance, uh, will be provided and allocated from general funds. At this point in time, the proposed construction let date is late twenty-seven, that may change. And again, this contract, or this agreement would really come into play once the project is constructed and approved by GDOT. That's when it would go into effect.
George, you mentioned sidewalk in that description. Is there actually going to be sidewalk?
There's a small amount of sidewalk in the project limits. Yes, sir?
Okay.
I think GDOT is, they're promoting, you know, livable, walkable streets, um, you know, pedestrian connectivity, so they, they put sidewalk on their projects? Yes, sir?
Is that going to be on sixty-one or Dabs Bridge?
Mostly in the roundabout area itself.
Is there si- I, I mean, I don't live in that district, sorry. But, um, is there any other sidewalk port to connect to?
Yeah, right now, there isn't. You know, sixty-one was obviously a very old roadway design many years ago. GDOT with their new projects, they're promoting, you know, walkability, um, walkable streets. So that's part of the design process they have to go through. So, um, on new projects, they typically sidewalks are included along those limits.
Be like mini-track.
Any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Next, um, action to adopt resolution twenty-five dash twenty-seven, acquisition of real property for this corridor improvements along SR one oh one from Crossroads Church Road to Golden South Parkway. Uh, Paulding County has programmed an intersection program project for State Route one oh one between Holly Springs Road and Crossroads Church, Church Road located in post two. Improvements includes, um, proving the safety operations of the corridor, providing a roundabout intersection at a relocated state highway one oh one, Goldmine Road and Holly Springs Road in a left turn lane on SR one oh one going on to Crossroads Church Road. Um, GDOT, um, awarded Paulding County two million dollars in state funding towards the construction of the project in two thousand twenty-three. To receive the funding, the county was required to update plans to follow the GDOT plan development process, otherwise known as the PDP. Since that date, the county has substantially completed preliminary engineering design. It is currently in the right-of-way acquisition phase. Total of fourteen parcels of property were needed for the construction of the project. Five parcels are still need to be required. Um, earlier this year, on January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, the board of commissioners adopted and amended county ordinance sixty-two dash two entitled Acquisition of Right-of-Way Ineasements for Road Construction Projects. That ordinance provides, uh, a procedure that governs, again, the acquisition of right-of-way ineasements for the purpose of improving or expanding the county road system. This ordinance provides specific language that allows the boards of commissioner to authorize the DOT director to acquire real property interest from multiple parcels within a road construction project by enacting a resolution which sets forth the name of the road construction project and the tax parcel identification numbers for the parcels to be acquired as part of the road construction project. With the amount of parcels still needing to be acquired, we believe, um, it makes sense to, uh, essentially request the board, um, provide a resolution for this. And, um, like I said, that's, um, looking towards, you know, getting the right-of-way ineasements card for this project and moving forward. So, ask the board, consider approving this.
Any comments, question?
Thank you. Um, next, um, action to adopt, adoption, resolution twenty-five dash twenty-eight, acquisition of real property for the SR one-twenty connector, otherwise known as Hiram Sudie Road, Davis Mill Road North and Davis Mill Road South Intersection Improvement Project. Similar to the last project, Paulding County has a programmed intersection project at State Route one-twenty connector, Hiram Sudie Road, Davis Mill Road North, Davis Mill Road South located in post one and three. This project, um, basically provides a, um, new intersection, new roundabout intersection. Current intersection is an all-way stop, not very efficient particularly during peak times. Um, new intersection roundabouts, they move traffic much faster, and again, without compromising safety, typically because the speeds are low going into the roundabout. The county has substantially completed preliminary engineering. It's currently in the right-of-way phase. Thirteen parcels are required for the construction of the project. Seven have, still need to be, um, purchased. Um, again, similar to the last project, we talked about the, um, acquisition of right-of-way ineasements for road construction project. We're asking the board, consider adopting this, uh, resolution to acquire right-of-way for this project. And similar to the last project, I didn't explain it, but keep in mind, these are projects that are on the state highway system. The county board of commissioners has taken on the responsibility to provide improvements for the residents, um, that these projects would not likely get programmed at any time in the near future. So these are needs. The board, you know, obviously has taken on that responsibility, the time, the costs, and we believe it's a good, um, a good use of the transportation dollars to put into these improvement projects that need work. And I just want to say thank you for, for that.
I have a question about that one. You might have said, when are, when do you anticipate that all this will be done and the actual construction would start on?
Yeah, I didn't, yeah, I didn't say it. Um, again, you know, with the right-of-way acquisition phase, you know, the things can happen if you have to go, depending on the negotiations, how they go. Um, I think we're looking at spring twenty twenty-six. Hopefully, if we can get all these parcels acquired in a reasonable amount of time.
Good. I'm looking forward to that project. Um, I, I wanted to say on all this right-of-way acquisition while Mr. Stokes is in the room, uh, it might be interesting to see all the people who don't think their property's valuable when it comes to assessments, but when you want to buy twenty feet of it, it's worth seventy million dollars.
I'm not going to say anything.
Just curious.
And usually, that's the toughest part of the whole project, really, is acquiring that land. I know at Rosa's store, my roundabout took six years.
Yeah, but look right now, you're, it's operation.
Oh, it's awesome. No complaints.
But you're right, absolutely, you know, right-of-way acquisition utilities can be, you know, environmental, historical, there's many things that go into a project depending on the funding, you know, that's with it. It can, it really drags these projects out for years. Look at these lar- large highway projects, they take decades.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you. And last, um, new business option to purchase right-of-way for parcel seventy-seven, ninety-four, and ninety-six of the Cedar Crest Road Widening Project. Um, on December twelfth, two thousand seventeen, Trans Systems was awarded a contract by the Paulding County Board of Commissioners for Preliminary Engineering Design Services for the Cedar Crest Road Widening Project from Harmony Grove Church Road to the Cobb County Line, now located in post one and post four. On October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, the board of commissioners awarded a consultant services agreement to BM and K for right-of-way acquisition. Federal funding was secured with the Atlanta Regional Commission to fund a portion of the right-of-way. Uh, the ARC provided a five million dollar grant, and the county was provided, had to, um, provide a twenty percent match to receive that five million dollars. With the federal funding awarded to the project, the Georgia Department of Transportation is overseeing the project management. Um, when it comes to the right-of-way acquisition, the right-of-way, the consultant right-of-way acquisition team establishes a property value for each parcel required for the project. These values are submitted to the Georgia Department of Transportation for their review in concurrence. Um, once approval is received from GDOT, the consultant, on behalf of the county, initiates contacting property owners regarding pro- project impacts to their parcels as well as compensation and acquisition. At this point in time, we're asking the board to approve the acquisition of the following parcels. Parcel seventy-seven, parcel ID zero three one point two point zero one six point zero 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 in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Parcel ninety-four, which is parcel ID zero one one point three point four point zero two seven point zero 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 in the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars. And parcel number ninety-six, parcel ID zero one one point three point four point zero two six point zero 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 in the amount of a hundred and forty thousand dollars. If approved, funding will be allocated, um, from the SPOS and with reimbursement up to five million dollars from the Federal Highway Administration.
Any questions? George, you've been busy, and it looks like if it's approved, you're going to be really busier.
Yeah, we've got, like I said, we, our staff, you know, keeps many of these projects going, obviously. Um, there's, there's personnel, there's funding. Um, like I said, there's, there's a lot going to it. We have a thousand miles of county roads. Paulding County, you know, has typically been, traditionally been one of the, you know, busiest counties in terms of growth in the metro Atlanta area, and it's going to stay that way as projected. So obviously, you know, people want to get to where they're going safe and efficiently, and it, and it takes, um, improvement projects to be able to make that happen.
Yep. Thanks for all you do, and your whole staff. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we'll get Mr. Wooten up. He's got two. First, we'll discuss the action to approve the emergency, uh, purchase and installation of a sixteen-inch insert valve, uh, with, uh, HD, uh, excavation and utilities in the amount of, uh, sixty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. This purchase is funded through the Renewal and Extension Fund and is located in post one. And then the last one is discuss action to approve the KISSS Annual Service, uh, and, uh, Support Agreement with Kendall Supply Company, Inc., in the amount of sixty-four thousand, two hundred, I'm sorry, sixty-three thousand, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, this purchase is funded through the general funds. Mr. Wooten?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Y'all, y'all have had a busy morning.
It's almost afternoon.
Well, um, on the Highway ninety-two and East Paulding sixteen-inch insert valve, um, Paulding County maintains, um, three different pressure zones established by overflow elevations of each zone's respective, uh, elevated elevated and ground storage tanks. The Water Department doesn't guarantee adequate acceptable water service or pressure above a mean sea level of 1,130. The Water Department recognized this a couple of years ago and began working to create the Mount Taper Pressure Zone. We've used funding from developers to help build this so we can serve properties above 1,130. The Roberts Elementary School is inside of this pressure zone. They expanded the school campus to handle an additional 150 students and it needed the additional pressure and flow from the upgraded pressure zone to provide fire protection for the school. The water system, once they closed the loop, found out we were still losing water. And we found out that there was a 16-inch valve that was not holding and school was getting closer to opening. And so we turned around and ordered an emergency 16-inch insert valve, which allows you to install the valve while everybody is live, to help close the system for Roberts Elementary School. And we would like the BOC to approve the emergency purchase and installation of that 16-inch insert valve with HD excavations and utilities in the amount of $64,250. Yeah, it's, it's, we'll have you out the next time that we do need to do that. The insert valves allow us to install it operational, but it also becomes a necessity when other valves won't close because it expands the area that people would be without water service. So, but it really did help. Roberts Elementary School is open and running and they saved quite a bit of money by not having to install an additional tank and fire suppression system for the school. They're operating entirely on the water system.
Any questions? Next.
Okay. The next item is for our KISSS Annual Services and Support. Paulding County Water System utilizes Census FlexNet SAAS, which is a software, it's a service, which is what the SAAS is, offering the Census FlowNet Communication Network. And we currently use Kendall Supply Company to give us the support services. It began years ago when we were utilizing three base stations. As the system grew and the number of base stations increased and our AMI system is growing, the cost for the support service has, has increased because there's more items to maintain. The annual support provides assistance, including communication upgrades, dealing with touch read meters, drive-by meters, FlexNet meter rate reading and communication, base station monitoring and maintenance, and OmniMeter and support. In addition, the annual service provides extended warranty for all our base stations. The FlexNet system fees are covered. And we also have enhanced analytics that allow us to check the different meters in our system and to make sure everything's operating properly. The KISSS Annual Services and Support Agreement for 2026 is in the amount of $63,250. And we're requesting the BOC approve this KISSS Annual Services and Support Agreement with Kendall Supply Company in that amount. The, the purchase is actually funded through the general operating funds for the water system. Are there any?
Any questions or comments? Looks like there's none. Thank you, Mr. Woodton. Appreciate it. That's the conclusion of our regular business. There's no participation, public participation. At this time, I'd like to see if there's any announcements or comments from our commissioners. They're quiet, they're ready to go to lunch. We will go into executive systems, executive session to discuss real estate. And so I will need a motion to adjourn and go into executive session and we will adjourn from there and won't be coming back. Do I have a motion?
Motion to go into executive session for real estate and to adjourn from there.
And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Kaker. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Have a wonderful-